This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
So, this is our long-awaited luncheon this week about the discussion of affordable housing. And we wanted to do tonight is take a few minutes and talk a little bit about where we've been historically as a city and some of the things that we've done which relates to affordable housing. And spend a little bit of time talking about what we're working on and what's happening with the community and having everybody get on the same page with some of the various initiatives that are out there. Talk a little bit about what some of your ideas are and where we might want to be going. Instead of talking about comprehensive approach, where are some of the ideas and where are some of the next steps. So this is not a conversation we can convene or make. It's not a conversation that we button up totally at one time. But hopefully tonight we can raise some ideas on where we want to be going and some of those next steps and what we want to be doing. We're hopeful to be able to have a conversation of our own, to explore and then that range. And Scott, let's go to who just...
All right. Very good. Thank you, Dale. Thank you, everybody, for hanging on for yet another meeting. It's been delayed long and incoming, but hopefully worth all of our time here tonight to create a meeting to talk through a number of issues related to affordable housing. You can see in the slide there, this seemed to be the most appropriate title, "Portable Housing Framing Issues." Just really setting up a framework of, as Dale mentioned, what we've done, where we've been, where we're headed, what's happening right now, and just make sure we're essentially all tracking on the same page. And just hopefully through that, almost like a reverse gap analysis, just kind of reveal the what's black, whatever we had to talk about, but that's yet to come. And maybe just help us set up some more guardrails moving forward from here. So I had some, you know, old nuggets to share, you know, anecdotes and such. But as you know, I came here most recently from Kansas City. It is 530 miles from my old house to Eau Claire, so KZ to EC. That's an eight-hour drive. So I just kind of pictured this as kind of bringing the issue as like a kind of a rest stop, pit stop along the way. Just kind of a pull-over. We've seen bits and pieces of the affordable housing discussion up to this point. Been the last few weeks, months, years even. But let's just pull over, kind of assess where we've been, you know, we're almost there perhaps. Let's just take a big look, take a pull-over and just give a broad map, just double-check where everything's at and make sure our car's running well as well. So with that, just a quick assessment of that. The next slide. We can say everything started in 2005, but as we know, that's not entirely accurate. I'm sure there were quite a bit of activities prior to that. But this is really just essentially my literature review, as it were. I'm doing kind of a PhD or a master's thesis. And yes, I'm wearing my, I don't have the suede patches, but I'm in a professor jacket on today. So my glasses, in fact, so I'm trying to at least look smart. So again, this is subject at Phase 1 level, just looking at, again, literature review. What has already been out there, what have we produced publicly most recently, at least in this century? So again, we can go back further in time, but it seemed most appropriate to start with that by the Conference of Plan because that was really the first time we put pen to paper to be really cognizant about housing issues and housing affordability in Eau Claire. One of the key issues that was identified in the Conference of Plan was that rental housing supply. And specifically, it asked a question, "What should the city do to increase the supply of lower-cost rental housing, especially with more than two bedrooms?" So that was a focus back in 2005. And one of the objectives there was to look at housing affordability and to use regulations and assistance programs to help make housing affordable for all. As is identified there, the most significant housing problem in Eau Claire is the need for very low-cost housing units. So obviously, this was a key issue back in 2005, and that's kind of a good starting point here. More specifically, it talked about things such as, you know, two or more bedrooms. Talked about safe and sanitary. Talked about housing construction industry, reuse for those who can pay high rents. And older units have been made available to keep pace with the pace of the demand. Starting to sound very familiar. Public and private sectors have not been able to make up the difference. Again, very similar issues to what we're already discussing here today. So laid out actually from here, we talk about, I'll talk a little bit more later about the 2013 Conference of Plan Health chapter. And then 10 years later, kind of jumping, fast-forwarding quite a bit to 2015. Because to be honest, not much was done in 2005, 2015 specifically in that housing affordability objective. Now, I say that exclusive of all the work that Housing Authority has done and continues to do. So not to discount that effort, but specific to the city, the city policies and objectives. Apart from the Housing Authority, not much had been done. So 2015, and here you can see, beginning with the 2014 Housing Assessment, prior to the adoption of the Conference of Plan 2015, a number of major housing issues were identified. Beginning with rental housing supply, surprise surprise, back reflecting the 2005 Conference of Plan most prevalent. Number two, affordability for low-income households. Should save more of its money into rent assistance in a scattered site full of housing. Do you recognize what scattered site full of housing is? So don't face your hand because I'm not sure what that is. So again, some of these things were done in a, kind of gathering a lot of information in 2014 for this Housing Assessment and tried to lay out again these major issues. Public housing, should additional public housing be constructed? It's not as been built or carved since 1992. A job that we're here with Housing Authority do it, it would say, "Yes, or should be, but no, or can't be." Because there were certain house restrictions, how much of that can be done. Number four, diversity in design. It's what creates a diversity of housing type, housing types desirable within single neighborhoods. The design standards help to create a better mixture of housing types and densities. Talk a little bit more about that later here. Talk about the four basic goals and things that happened, what happened in the form. For five, upper bracket, housing. So again, we're looking at housing policy. So in this case, it was really trying to be all, that's why I had someone jokingly talk about scattered site full of housing because there are a lot of different aspects to this. It's not just, you know, affordable housing specifically back in that Housing Assessment. It was looking at all aspects of housing. So even upper bracket housing should see being special efforts to attract new housing with sale prices over $300,000. So 2015, thinking that's like 2014 Assessment, four years ago, $300,000 is not upper bracket in the work. And the realtors in the room, you know, it's already $400 plus now. And that's upper bracket, here we are just four years later. Infill standards. Should design standards be developed for communal housing in existing, other neighborhoods in rural design? Talk more about that here in a moment. Preservation of existing housing, covering cities' existing housing stock. That's sort of an upgrade. And are additional incentives being implemented, private sector investment housing in neighborhoods? There are eight updating. How can those large stock, the N50s and 60s, single-family houses best be updated to meet current market demands and ensure the viability of their neighborhoods? And number nine, zoning flexibility. Talk about this in a while later on as well. Should the city zoning code be made more flexible to accommodate a greater variety of housing types and same designs? So those are the major issues that were discussed in this Housing Assessment. That information, that document is actually on the website. It certainly has one close to that. But that was really taking that, again, kind of what's the current status, the situation of housing in Eau Claire. It's the most recent Conference of One that we've done. So we're looking back to 2014, and as I mentioned, even some of the numbers are already becoming a bit out of place. But again, that's our best snapshot we have currently moving forward. Again, trying to acquire efforts, and this launched us into some other activities. So Clear Vision Eau Claire, I'm not sure if you was a part of that as that was being started. Thank you. This is laying out all the different sessions. There are seven sessions that were specifically identified through this Poverty Summit. Poverty Summit was a result of county-wide dialogues, held in 2014. We can talk about that Housing Assessment. It identified issues related to poverty, which may have been a concern throughout over county, which is a county generated effort in terms of its view or its per being connected while the Housing Assessment happened at the same time. Then led into, as we finished the Conference of Plan 2015, in late 2016, there's a system-led initiative that was launched there in October, was Poverty Summit. Since then, there were 300 people that were through, that participated in that, talking about poverty and community security in the county. There are a number of, again, citizens that were involved, and it's continues to see, you know, fruit from this effort back then as well. So just kind of laid out the different, you know, activities, the concessions that occurred. The action teams that were coming on, focusing on the different issues. The planning phase of the Poverty Summit, as you see up there, concluded actually in April 2017. And we'll move forward from there. Next slide. As I mentioned, Housing Authority, this is the most recent information in terms of the dates there. So again, we can back this up years, decades. So this is though just speaking more recently, kind of trying to be chronological here. So the most recent information Housing Authority, or the Housing Division has put forward are these items here. We had 2015, 2019, kind of five-year consolidated plan. So we're looking at updating that here in a year. That's the five-year overall plan, looking at how to spend and prioritize the HUD funds that the Housing Authority receives. There's the 2017 paper, which is the annual funds report. So the 2018 one will be coming out shortly, in a couple of months. And then the 2018 Annual Action Plan. This is the annual plan that identifies how those predeveloped block-rank funds will be spent. And finally, just working through it, actually the final draft of this summer, a 2018 Analysis Impediments, or AI, Analysis Impediments to Fair Housing. So some of the highlights, I'll just mention a few of those in here. Let's stay on the slide, don't worry. You can talk about housing costs versus wages. Talk about low-modic household numbers, homelessness numbers. Those are some of the component pieces that go into these different plans and reports. Talk about some recent figures, so kind of calculation of all these. Just to give you a little snapshot of where we are with Housing Authority and the work they do. Thirty-eight households receive rental assistance with a town-based rental assistance program. Six hundred fifty-four among households received tenant or landlord counseling translation services. One thousand forty-two persons sought emergency shelter as a result of homelessness. In terms of the actual housing stock, 44.2% of the city of Eau Claire housing stock is rent or occupied. That's, let's see, a little bit on the high side. It really is context-dependent in communities. I've seen that ranging from, you know, 25% to a third. So 44 is a little bit higher, but that's not unusual for a university city. So it's context-dependent as well. About 51.1% of renters are paying that 30% or more of their household income for rent-related expenses. We'll talk about what is affordable here in just a little bit. But that 30% is a common number that gets thrown around there as well. In the city of Eau Claire, it's also interesting, 73% of all housing stock was built before 1918. So that's 73%. So yeah, that's, yeah, that's quite, quite a large number for, you know, a community that's growing as much as we have been growing as well. In terms of poverty rate, we're at 17.7%. The state number is 10.8, so we are on the higher end of that. And in terms of, through the life of this program, the Housing Authority has purchased 22 houses to rehabilitate and then sold to those who experience low-moder income. So that sounds like, "Well, that's great, we did 22 houses." So that's over, yeah, that's over years and years of time. So their budget there allows for one or two per year. So I like to talk about being incremental and strategic. That's very, it's a slow process. Again, 22 families' house through this process, that's great, but it's very small and a slow process.
Please take questions if you can.
Yes.
Do we have a sense of, so I know that there are nonprofits that manage low-income housing units as well. Do we have a sense of how combined between the Housing Authority and like the nonprofit sector, what do you think?
That's a great question. I do not have that knowledge. But that's a, that's a good one to identify for us around the department.
So to give you that, any question in 2014, the rental houses, was surveyed or assessed? What does that mean? I mean, you've got, you've got a percentage.
In terms of...
No, if you're wondering how much you can, how do you guess? With all of this, I don't think it's a time to say that, to understand.
Correct. So, yeah, 44.2% of housing stock is rent or occupied. That is a, an updated, correct.
So how many pieces is that?
Oh, how many? I could, that's not a good question. I would have to, I'd have to guess. But I want to say we're at 23, 25,000 houses, roughly. That sounds about right. It's a little close. Yeah, so I know it's something above 25,000, but so 44% of that type of housing. Do you question that?
Well, we're showing that 44.2%, is there, I'm not sure how they, exactly, but imagine there's a situation where someone's renting a house that is also owner-occupied or a same unit that's owner-occupied. How does it account for that situation? Both of them could be, basically, if you combine owner-occupied versus renter-occupied, it wouldn't necessarily mean 100%.
Right, and this is trying to address, it says housing stock. The idea is those are, so yeah, a house could have four units of housing. Three are renter, one is, I'm not sure if it's that sophisticated in terms of its calculation. There's a question. I can check to see methodology, how that's calculated. That is not necessarily a Housing Authority live number. That may vary, like, you know, state, doesn't state anything. Probably have to, you know. The way I've always, I've seen most accurate or useful is identifying utility bills. That's sometimes also not very accurate. How that operates to, some utilities are included, may not bill. But that helps identify owner-occupied, because they can match the owner with the housing. So that's what we're going to do here. All right. A couple of things I wanted to point out, for example, in terms of prior efforts, things that have been done here. The Annual Action Plan talks about rental assistance. That's one thing we haven't talked a lot about through the portable housing section as most recently. But that is an opportunity for rent assistance to households who are experiencing low-moder income. That's through home loans, federal bonds. And that's nearly $200,000 that is directed towards rental assistance. And from that, approximately 50 families have been from there. It sounds like a lot of money until you realize you just drill down. It's not really 50 families, but it's not 20,000 to 2,000 families. It's, you know, 20,000 to 50. So it's, again, it's very robust and strong support for those 50 families, but that's kind of the maximum that the city has.
Thank you. Where is the tax on that?
What's it, the annual funded?
Like 50 different families or...
It could, yeah, it could. That's good, I'm not entirely sure. I don't have legal on that, but I'll just make any kind of confidential information. I don't have that right here. Another one too, we talked about, that's a citywide approach, which is kind of base rental assistance. That's a citywide thing as well, so that's what's important to identify with that. The Analysis Impediments, that was just working through this summer. One of the impediments that talked about was an ongoing need for additional funding for portable housing. System of recommended actions out of that. And I talked about prior efforts, but that's really very recent identification. Some of the things that it identified and suggests that we look at, as the city's coordinating with that, it talks about the draft resolution to adopt it, and the life available tax increment, finance districts. There's been discussion about consistent TIDS and utilizing it as the start to expire. Again, those are things we'll start looking at as those TIDS come to the conclusion of their life and see what remaining influence goes to, I guess, remain to utilize for, I don't...
What's the answer?
Yeah, that's a question. Excuse Jay, I don't see if you have no more to add. The TIDS, which one might, which ones are, yeah, coming up next to expire or rolls out?
Um, probably the TID.
It wouldn't be, I think, the, 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 yeah.
So that's, and it's...
I don't see what you're doing here.
Probably a point, yeah, that's a good point. So we mentioned that, and I, yeah, I don't want to give everyone's hopes up because I like this whole bit of service. That's still something to be considering. So one of the other, again, recommended actions was to...
That said though... Should I build it? Five years from here. Okay. So there's, there's that provision that the life of the, we have here in some of this area. We're also...
No, well, what we did is, is that the element project that we had set aside, we used to talk about that.
We have to be, that's... That was the, that was the idea. And if you're only used for, it's helping to...
Also, could, could, could be...
It could be also, that could also be, you know, support, so it has a certain, a certain process.
Do you see that the housing TIDS, Water Street area, is a more of an affordable housing tool or more of a housing improvement tool, in like safety?
So when we established it, it was very essential. And, of course, the slide was, myself, sort of, we're, I was, I was, I would call it, more, actually, it's, um... We have, it's, um, it's, yeah, it's, for sure. What has yet to come, we need to, we need to focus.
Excellent, thank you. So this is mostly just a visual, so there we go. Visuals talk about the Invest Health, again, prior efforts, this one is also certainly ongoing as well. The Invest Health, I can read it from the description of what that is. The goal of Invest Health, the ship is to create vibrant, safe, healthy central city neighborhoods, incorporate health considerations into community. So there's oversight team and a core team. So the Eau Claire Invest Health team, one of 15 cities across the country that was ranked at this, essentially, according to several committee and working with other committees as well. One of, we have one of six in the country. And that started back in 2016, it's 2017, and now it's concluding here, 2018. So what's involved, included, first came from the Renters Association. Your city manager, Dale Vayner's, Lisca, this guy's here, with, with Eau Claire City Health. Keith Jonathan with the Housing Authority, and Mr. Mike Rendell with the University of Wisconsin. So those folks formed this core team and started to look at projects related to, I think you had to talk about all those different pieces, but talking about policy, physical activity, housing, food access, and social connection. As a part of this, kind of in a spin-off, Health Impact Assessment was conducted in the Canary District last year. I also want to talk about, kind of ties in very closely, as Dale mentioned, with Water Street and then turning into Historic Randall Park neighborhood. And I just wanted to mention their neighborhood plan was redone in 2014. Those are ongoing. Again, Third Core is going through their neighborhood planning process now as well. And so these are opportunities to talk about affordable housing and projects that can, you know, lead to additional policies, again, programs and such to improve affordable housing conditions. Do you want to mention that, kind of one of the talking points there is it talks about the strong connection between health, well-being, and housing, and what's the need for safer, affordable housing for families at all financial levels. This is the first time that we clearly identify and talk about affordable housing that is defined as no more than 30% of housing. And that's inclusive of their housing cost being like rent or mortgage plus utilities, taxes. So it's the all-in number of 30%. So, and then we'll talk a little bit more as we get into the next slide. But if you are spending more than 30% of your income, we consider cost burden. So this we'll talk about here in just a moment. So with that, these are some of the outcomes. Go ahead.
And so that raises the cost.
Burden. Cost burden.
And the definition of that is you're paying more than...
Paying over 30% of your...
For all housing to access.
Right. Of your gross income, so it's all in. That's, again, that's, that was some of the definition utilized to create this Invest Health team. We are still working on what all of that will look like as we conclude that project. We're working closely with Historic Randall Park. We're talking about some other policy outcomes such as, you know, more design standards to improve single-family owner-occupied housing stock, out of the existing housing stock there in Randall Park, looking at are there corridors that we can kind of focus as a pilot to make improvements to the existing housing stock as well as increase single-family homeownership. So it's kind of a combination of both improving neighborhood conditions, but also improving homeownership. So it's not purely and strictly talking about affordable housing, but it kind of plays into that more neighborhood stabilization side of it. So we can jump to the next slide. So from there, now we're getting into the current state of things. The Regional Housing Task Force. This was essentially a brainchild of the city of Altoona mayor. And I see your city planners here, so I'll turn over to him to give the rest of the, not soon. But Josh is here, Josh Luns from Altoona. He and I have been working together, putting together these different meetings for this Regional Housing Task Force. The way we identified this, have a brief mission statement. The Task Force is intended to build upon, complement, and incorporate the other existing dialogues around various aspects of housing. It is trying to tie back and consolidate all the information we just talked about on the previous slides. The Clear Vision, the other housing coalitions, the other efforts of, of already occurring. So the Task Force was envisioned to meet three to four times. We're on our fourth meeting here coming up in a short period of time. And the idea is to investigate issue, aggregate data, and produce initial recommendations. So that, again, we had that same big question, what is affordable? So we talked about 30%. I'm just kind of going to take a little break here for a minute, kind of sidebar, talk about what does that mean? So looking at HUD numbers, looking at what we talked about, that Invest Health definition, looking at what the state. Wisconsin Housing and Economic Building Authority, what's that? And putting all those numbers together for the Oak Claire Metropolitan Service Area, so the greater Oak Claire metro. They use a number that they identify and looking at the WIDA numbers. And. Sorry, apologies. These are HUD numbers. So HUD calls four-person, very low-income limit calculation. So yes, that is an acronym, the L I O. And I've never heard of that before, and started talking about affordable housing, but HUD likes acronyms. But using that basis, they've identified the four-person, very-low-income limit number as $36,000. So that's a four-person. Now, based on that, they use these different multipliers or adjusters to determine, you know, four-person household, all the way to an eight and nine-person. So that can range from, for example, one person of $25,000 to $200,000. So let's say, again, like a six-person household of $41,000 to $200,000. So that's the very-low income. And what that very-low income means is 50% of the median for the metro area. Based on that, then HUD and others like WIDA take that and start making calculations annually. Typically in April they're published to determine what does that look like in terms of rent. Okay, so that's fine. That's what, you know, a family that is making that amount of money, four-person family making $36,000. What does that mean? They should be expecting for rent. Let's say it's a four-person, let's assume they're not living in a studio apartment. Let's assume they're living in a, you know, a two-bedroom or three-bedroom. Let's even say three-bedroom. That rent then is $936. Now, again, that's the all-in. So that's the all-in, that's that 30%, that's the rent, utilities, so forth, taxes. $936.
That's what, 30% of the $36,000?
That's the number. I'm not sure if it's just a 30% of that number, but that's, that's really just their calculation. There you go. So there you go. That's. Right, yes, exactly. So that's, yeah, that's the upper, upper limit of them. So hopefully that gives us a little bit better kind of framing, I guess, kind of framing the issue. What does, what do these numbers look like? Beginning to change annually. This is what we, you know, use to, you know, secure funding, request funding, and base determinations on for, you know, things such as grants and assistance and so forth. So, you know, folks like, you know, Keith and housing, they're bound by those numbers. That's just, that's just how you calculate and operate these things. So lacking any other definition, that's certainly a good place to start. And that's what we've essentially been using in, Josh correctly, from Rock, the Regional Housing Task Force, is that 30%. You know, we just get the numbers from HUD or from WIDA to say, where do you start? What's the income limit? And then do your 30%.
So how many people in Oak Claire would be, would follow or however, not paying for affordable housing?
In terms of.
So based on the median rent and what we know people's income was, we would probably be able to tell them something around the common core in that kind of the not paying for affordable housing. Is that the same as the ALIS numbers?
Well, we can jump to the next slide. Okay. Well, yeah. Jay answer your question?
Yeah, well, yeah.
And we'll go back. Hey, sorry, just wanted to make sure we got that answered quick. But we can talk about this more as well. So 46% are what we call cost burden, going back to that terminology as well. So you've probably seen all this in that ALIS report. So 46% are paying more than. But again, that's also, for me to understand, that's also inclusive of other, you know, healthcare, transportation, other. So that number gets higher just because we're adding a penalty adjustment.
That's what I wonder is like, do we know just on the housing side of things, how many people may be in that paying cost burden?
We have, it's math, it's mathable, that housing burdened, you know, number. Josh and I were just talking about, it comes from the census, so it's available.
Again, that's what I think to manage a lot of these numbers as well. You know, this is just released at the end of August, so you can see that it's a super system. So that's another channel we have, Regional Housing Task Force. And your question is that, we're dealing with so many different data sets that they don't all match up as much as our business team. And just as a county, I was reporting to HUD data from this year for the metro area. So that's kind of the ship of balance. So not only have the numbers from different years, they're geography and also, so it's all, these are all simple channels.
So I know that these sort of measures relating to a large range of conditions, they're not, there's always like a pitfall, right? There's always something that doesn't necessarily come forward. And I, this might be like the best way to measure affordable housing, but I'm not very, like, we have any opinions about any certain pitfalls and just like that. I've heard that this reflected immediate income, but not necessarily like the cost of living or the actual average.
Right. Good.
I guess I don't fully know what I'm asking. I'm mostly asking like what, where are the holes in this?
Yes. So thank you for super setting that up as we go forward here. Get to that in a moment. So just wanted to give a snapshot of what we've been with this housing task force, exactly that. We've been identifying or stumbling upon perhaps some of its gaps. One thing could be, for example, what is the cost of housing? How we measure that? And then you say it's $936, so a two-bedroom, you can't find anything less than $1,200. And that's, those are the things we found, we started talking about is how do you project it? That's why I mentioned if we have a rental assistance program, is that sufficient for 50 families? It looks, so yes, exactly. So we're taking 46% from the ALIS study, the gap, and what the actual cost of rent is based on what it should be. And what funding we get from the total assistance. Stirring all that up. Friday, we'll have the big reveal. Friday we have the big talk about exactly that. Now we have all these numbers, now we do. So just, again, get us caught up real quick. This was launched in the city of Altoona back end of June. That's the first meeting was hosted by Altoona. And then we kind of all raised since then, the second meeting. And the second meeting was kind of August. That's when we, just at very time that we talked about ALIS report, I need to talk about that in a moment, if you can. But we started asking these questions to the group. What are the impediments and constraints to generating affordable workforce housing? And so we got a lot of good feedback. We tabulated that meeting, Altoona, a lot of their assistance, their 100% intern work. Things such as cost of materials and labor, available housing or lack of inventory, regulations, neighborhood, certain income constraints. The lack of quality rentals, of land shortage. So we started just gathering every, essentially every possible impediment or constraint was identified. So nothing was, it was as though we had at least one of everything in terms of what could be the constraint. So that's what we, now we sort of start to whittle that down and focus on where can we make most of that. The third meeting was held the first of November back down to this. And we started talking with our sector groups. We had been able to identify what were the core groups and their expertise based on their professions and interests. So we had four separate meetings. Again, many thanks to Josh for setting all of this up. Had a group focused on lived experience and support agencies. In mid-November, the same day, met with builders and developers. Later that we talked with zoning and policy, folks interested in that. And then finally, just two weeks ago, met with folks focused on the finance side of things. So that just gives you a little snapshot of where we've been. And I'll talk here in a moment of where we're going. We can jump to the next slide. So ALIS report, this was released essentially the day that we met, more or less. And ALIS, just again, another acronym, because we have talked in acronyms, it seems like we've said that times. It talks about asset limited income constraint and employment. So 46% of folks in the city of Oak Claire began to compare it to 36% in the city of Altoona. And looking here, overall, we're looking at 42% for Oak Claire County as a whole. So kind of taking all those numbers all together. So with that, what are some other numbers we're looking at? The population we're talking about in the county is about 103,000, 41,000 households in the county. The median household income is $49,821, which is 7,000 of the state average, important to note. The unemployment rate is at 4%, which is right on the state average. And the ALIS households, I should say it's 28%, apologize. The state average is 25.0. So I think the income, as you're seeing, adding these numbers up, our income is lower than the state average. And all of a sudden, therefore, our ALIS households are higher than the state average. And through that, we have, through the ALIS numbers, again, this is where we started getting some conflicting data. We were showing through Housing Authority's information, 17.7% if you're taking notes, are in poverty. The ALIS data said we're 14%. That's not insignificant. I mean, that's, that's quite a, quite a big difference between those two. Regardless though, the state average is around 12%. So again, the ALIS talks about households that earn more than the federal poverty level, so they have that higher income. But less than the basic cost of living for the county, as they call it, the ALIS threshold. Combine the number of ALIS and poverty level households, those in the two here, so 20% are in ALIS. It's 42, we had the 14% that are in poverty. Again, that could be 17%, so that number looks a little bit higher. Again, households move in and out of poverty, so again, that's probably why that number can change in these different, in different sources. But again, it's a case where these folks are asset limited, income constrained, unemployed. So with that, there's also, this is balanced as well by a working institution's report that was just released in mid-October called State of the Heartland. Again, this is very important to show here too. Again, they showed that the average wage in the state is $48,000, but it's only $42,000 in Oak Claire. So even if the numbers are different, like again, the ALIS study said 49.8 for Oak Claire and 56.8 for the state. Working institutions showed it as 42 for Oak Claire and 48 for the state. The point it remains where our wages are lower, but our housing costs are not radically different. And that's what we're working on, creating a lot of those numbers together. So that's why you can see the ALIS numbers start to look a little bit worse, a little bit higher. And you can see that, that number creep up over the years. At the point where we are at 28%, which is the highest it's ever been. Again, through this stuff.
You see the wages are lower than Oak Claire compared to the other cities.
And we're on average around six to seven, six, six to seven thousand, six to seven thousand dollars on average. Lower than the state. Yes.
Something that comes to mind in my understanding of the ALIS report is that the trend, not only in our community, but really across taxes in state and country is that a majority of the households that are experiencing most of their poverty are single income earners. And many are male in our community. And so I think there's kind of a multiple-pronged approach for any public policy issue. But I just wonder where, it doesn't have to be question and answer right now, but in my mind, just thinking about, is there? How do we know we're pursuing the sweet spot for helping those individuals who are single income earners, households? So like a studio apartment perhaps could be affordable, a one-bedroom could be affordable versus trying to create a lot of family units. When I'm sure we do need some family units. But how do we, I guess, blend that right formula to meet the needs of people in the community? Understanding that this idea of $3,600 for a four-person household, that might not be the reality for somebody if they're bringing home $24,000. And yet they can only get a one-bedroom at $900 or $1,200.
Excellent question, and one that we are asking some of our data experts already. So I'm not ready to share this. This is something we're hoping to talk about on Friday, which is our very important, the fourth and likely final large regional housing task force meeting. But we've been meeting with the folks at, put together that Analysis Impediments, Cedar Court. So I don't want to give away all their trade secrets at the moment, but this is a very rough draft. But they were trying to identify exactly that. They're looking at the housing stock, what's being built, and taking that, these income numbers we're talking about and matching this up. And in a way, it's showing where is there a need, where is a gap? We have, you know.
Where are the biggest gaps?
Exactly. Yep. And we have, and where we see that, to be honest, we're seeing, they try to look at households in different income brackets. And, you know, regardless of, you know, household size or household type. And they're looking at mortgage, kind of also ranges, and then also kind of that home value as well. So this is kind of focusing on the owner occupied side of things, not necessarily the rental person. But trying to understand what's being built, you know, what are we promoting? What are we seeing available out in Oak Claire? And what do we need more of? And that being the case, we're seeing actually a number of households in the upper income brackets. And I say upper being like over $75,000. With a low inventory available to them. But we're seeing the same on the other end of the bill. Those with anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000. And what do you say was, what was that four-person household, $36,000, right? So that's right in there. That also has, you know, almost an equivalent of lack of inventory for their advantage of, in this case, mortgages. So housing values. And that housing value would be something around, sorry, back that up, something around that $80,000. So kind of jumbling up all these numbers a bit. Point being, we're seeing the greatest expansion of housing destruction on, where do you think, the upper end? Because we're seeing flashes all around. But we're seeing, the orange is the housing inventory. The blue is the, is the income, people in a certain income bracket. So all of a sudden, we're seeing, sure enough, most are building for a single-family housing over $250,000 now. But if you look over here, very similar bar size in terms of folks in that lower income bracket needing more inventory, but folks aren't building. So how do we, again, talk about incentivizing for all of that? So how do we, again, talk about incentivizing for a, right?
That's about building, not just apartments, where that all?
These are all, this is, oh, single family. Right, exactly. So yeah, it's kind of a small snapshot of the, sure. The point, we're just trying to, at least, you know, anecdotally, but using real data, showing, showing that we're building, we're building what's needed. We need that inventory shortage here, and that's two hundred and fifty thousand and none, housing shortage. But we have just the same amount of need of more, of where do you think all our permits are? So again, not trying to, not making a, you know, a judgment on that, it's just the fact that how do we get more of this inventory than this, rather than just this? Yeah, right, right. So again, I think we've got more and more numbers here, but these are things that we're trying to kind of sort through and put together in a, you know, better visual and give a good explanation as we move forward here. But I want to investigate that as we go on here, just talk about that, how that compares with, again, the situation. It's missing at both ends. What's also interesting to note, you know, I don't want to get too sidetracked, sorry, but I just, your data won't, it's certainly interesting. But really, pretty much all but a couple income brackets have housing shortage. So I can need to, you know, filter in the front, but there's housing inventory shortage amongst.
I don't think that's, that's a, I think it's an option on this new board.
So I, you know, honestly, again, there's a housing shortage elsewhere, but what's being developed traditionally in the higher end? Well, again, because when all things being equal, if it's a cost in, you know, talk about labor costs and such, it's housing nearly as much. It's percentage wise to build a more expensive house, it's sort of a moral return as, right, as percentage versus the lower valued house. Tell me why it should be, okay, well, if you guys were sort of incentivizing permits or the, and things like that. And so of course, we're not alone.
Laboring from Oklahoma up to Kansas City. So they're, they're bringing people in from elsewhere in the country. And another anecdote real quick, I don't know if this is true or not, but it made a good story. A local builder mentioned that he was so desperate for labor recently. He talked to a worker at Wendy's, gave him a 50% raise and now he's on one of his jobs.
Locally?
Yeah, locally. It's not like the person that you knew that, you know, oh, I know so-and-so that worked at Wendy's and they can, they can be framing. And then went and found him and said, I'll give you 50% and work it out there.
Oh, that policy mean, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
So.
Familiar.
Yeah, I didn't want.
Because he was saying.
Mentioned the builder.
Right, he was saying that people don't, kids don't know that there's an option that you can, you know, like.
You take the labor, yeah.
Right.
The labor jobs are avoided.
Yeah, and so they just go to work at McDonald's not knowing that they can make as much.
They learn the trade.
Yeah, and learn the trade and, yeah, provide for them.
And so, yeah, CBTC is, is trying to, you know, pick up the slack a bit too. You know, speaking of spec homes, they're, they're building homes through their trades classes and such as well, but they're, they're doing the best they can to get that out there. Another thing I did want to mention too, data, we're, we're playing around with is really drilling down on, you talk about jobs. What are, what jobs are, you know, what are the jobs in Eau Claire, not a job market in a way, but, you know, existing jobs? What are the, what's the median pay? And then kind of extrapolating, what can those occupations afford for a loan or a mortgage? So going, tying back to this, this stat. And we talk about 260 to 290,000 or whatever being a, a number. So far the, the calculations we did would mean that nobody can afford a house, so. But in, in Austin, I mean, even just with the 5% down, 4% interest, 30-year mortgage with taxes and everything included. You know, so, you know, 250 is the top end for occu-. So that's sort of kind of playing with the data to see, well, if we drill down a little bit more, you know, let's take an median income, you know, is that the right number? So taking that 30%, that was the issue. If you do the 30%, keep people out of that kind of Alice range, what can they afford? It's, it's 250 is top end. So that's, we talk about wages and wages really being a key player here too, because everything else is going up and wages are, are suppressed, so. Anyway, so kind of, well, we've dealt in that a little bit more than I was anticipating, only because again, it's a little bit of raw data of draft information. We're hoping to get out of this, this Friday's meeting, we'll talk about it in a minute. Concurrent efforts, I, I wanted to hit on this too. Talked about it as well today, there's a joint homelessness initiative with Erin Healy and Foster. Slide here, sorry.
When was this offered here?
Joint Homelessness Initiative is Erin Healy's report, it's just a seven-page report on her visit here at the end of October. Mentioning October 25th was kind of the, the group discussion on that. That's an image from that, she's put together what an action lab cycle would be, this 100-day sprint she talks about. And just, there's kind of a summary discussion of that today. But Amy Lyska hosted that and kind of led that as well, so we'll see what comes out of that. Also want to mention that, I guess one important graphic of that, I should have stolen a graphic from you, Lyska, was a, a lovely graphic showing all the different shapes to represent all the different groups that are doing the same thing. And so how do we get all these folks together to work on the same thing? And that was part of the intent of this regional housing task force. So I do want to talk about two, Dunn County is doing something similar. One of the representatives was there today as well. And they're doing, they call it a committee forum on housing. They kicked theirs off at the beginning of October. Again, very similar, but very specific to that area. I mean, again, more of a focus on kind of rural housing issues. You know, I'd rather have an urban, you know, Altuna, Eau Claire approach. Again, the joint homelessness initiative, Erin Healy, see where that's going to end up. And then Jonah has their affordable housing task force as well that's working on this. So some things I want to mention from, I just want to pull out real quick from that Dunn County example. When I went to their kickoff meeting, they talked a lot about similar things, but they're already throwing, what are some wishes we could do? This is kind of leading to our next steps here. They talked about they wanted incentives from landlords, they wanted more emergency housing, they wanted to address the lack of inventory. Talked about we do a tiny home village like Chico Falls, it's sort of the repurpose. My favorite was repurposing demoed barns in tiny homes. So again, a very, kind of a rural approach, but you know, as, as farms consolidate, get sold off. We talked about this as well, but you know, as, as farmers start to, you know, next generation doesn't continue farming and such. Taking some repurposing, you know, other structures into, into homes. Microfinancing, engaging with faith-based organizations, evolving funding services, centralized advocacy program, education. So those are some of the things that they were, they were kind of throwing out at their approach back in October. Too dissimilar to what we've been talking about. So last two slides here, this one talking about next steps, this Friday is the fourth task force meeting, the regional housing task force meeting. Well, likely being kind of the last big meeting before we, as we refine to new regulations. And providing the portions of a draft document, having a final report. And then strategize, have an action plan implementation, universal policy, policy revisions and such we could look at as well. So here are the things that have yet to happen to kind of wrap up that group, the task force and their conclusion. Looking at that vacant lot inventory, existing housing inventory, policies and hand statistics, as I just showed, that's kind of the draft. Still researching zoning revisions. And then we're also going to talk about that permit structure as well, and everybody, other options are out there. As Jay mentioned, this evening, staff is still doing some research on that. It's, it's really a lot of trailways, a lot of communities, especially in Wisconsin and out to, very, I'd say innovative, but out of the box approaches to how the, um, interior, a kind of differentiated, destructure for, for housing.
Very well, they know.
They just. Been tracking, no, that'd be great. I only ask, I'm just, I've been, we've been tracking that, what they've been doing.
Yeah, they just.
Oh, that's. Yeah, I did see that.
They have done, um, yeah, they have, they do, they call them beans though, more flexible.
Or their beans though.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, that's, sorry, that's what I was, that's fine. So again, the task force conclusion, we're hoping to have some final report out next month. Again, things that have a key, things we're looking at, a regulation requirement, develop the report and provide some other presentations. So we'll do more of this kind of thing to the, to advise. Policy ordinance revisions, again, this is, I'm looking at final task force report. Where we can put one of the, have thrown into the mix here, so I can certainly add to that as we move forward. But again, we'll be still tracking, this is running through here for the next one for four. And we'll get their ordinance revisions in terms of setbacks, lot bits, lot sizes, unexpected permitting, those are some things we're throwing around in these secondary. And then do you want to mention that as well, as we talk about, questions here, but all the private partnerships, of course. Of Grand Hill, I think, identified local partners, connected investors, we've been having a lot of conversations with a lot of different, we've developed financial institutions, CFIs. Part of capital, it's one common bond, G X seven is a local regional one here. So we're making a lot of these connections as well, at least a lot of our operations. So let's kind of just lay out some of the immediate next steps and then I can jump to the final slide here. Got questions as well? As mentioned here, we have these sector-specific inputs, we have these different groups, we have on the slide there. Again, looking at all these different types of issues already mentioned in terms of those, what we still need from these sectors. We're looking at these different inventories, looking at the data collection. One thing I want to mention, the fees, again, we're looking at, can we think outside the box and do some kind of incentivizing as well at all? If Jay can set that up, is a possibility, when we talk with fee structure. One thing too, we're still working on a parkland dedication. If we talk about that, that is likely a fee increase. So we'd be remiss to just ignore that part of it, because if that's something that the council is, is still moving forward with strong interest in, any kind of fee in lieu of parkland dedication type approach, that's something we would need to kind of factor in to our, our data analysis and our, our calculations as well. And then I guess that's really about it, looking at doing some ordinance revisions. Obviously open to modifying the zoning code. And then do you want to mention too, we're going to start talking about revising the copyings of plan with the, the five-year update. So every five years, we look at our revision and update and kind of just reconfiguration out of full rewrite. And that's 2020, and so this next year, we're already starting to talk with, I've met with Jeff, Evan, Jerry, Peter Services. Kind of looked at assessing where some of their goals, objectives are. And already started talking about what modifications they specifically, what we'll be making very good next year. So.
I don't know if this can be covered, but we kind of zeroed in on new building. And not so much about downtown and existing structures and. So, so.
So that's where I have questions, absolutely, questions input. As I mentioned, we want to start looking at the gap analysis, even just here, just an anecdote, we need to look at.
Another place my, yeah, another place my brain went was when the financial sector was, there was that caution about buyer or renter liability and, you know, the ability to maintain the rented or owned property. So I think there's that support structure as well and start that from something that works in the long term.
And that's one thing too with the budget and then as well, this next year, looking at, you know, how we can, you know, advocate or just somehow, you know, engage that part of it. Absolutely. Again, I could point back to, you know, Randall Park is, is a focus to get through the best health and we, as perhaps even more hyper-focused as a pilot area of order within there to look at, you know, the developments, I call it neighborhood stabilization, that's also a term of art. Federal government uses, you know, more, uh, arcane way, under a common way, but neighborhood stabilization in a more philosophical way is what I'm saying here. What we've done with existing residential stuff.
So last, last summer, where did it happen, Scott first joined us. He'll tell you that one of the first conversations we had was that we needed to start talking about where we wanted to go and where our priorities could be and how that would fit, related to affordable housing. And we wanted to have this work session last summer. Coincidentally though, you know, we had the task force that got formed, we're kind of starting that. And so the, you know, there's a lot of legwork that's been done by that task force. And so we're thinking that, that there's, there's some very tangible things coming out of that, that task force that, and, and the importance of having our policy decisions be data-driven is for us significant, and we could do as well. And there's so many different options and things for us to choose from, being able to have some data that helps us pick and choose and prioritize. So we're not going to be able to do every initiative that we might think we want to do. And we're going to have to decide where our priorities are and where are the gaps, where are the biggest gaps? And then together decide what, you know, which of those gaps should we want to be applying our resources to. So there's, we, we talked earlier about the kid and, you know, programs and where we want to go with that. And so those, those are all on the back burner right now, you know, we're going to decide where our priorities are. There's this whole series of zoning things that we've been talking about, not only for neighborhoods, but also the process relates to, you know, commercial properties, particularly. Especially commercial properties as, as our shopping habits go more online, how we repurpose some of that. So it's a bunch of, a whole bunch of zoning stuff that we're thinking about. And it's a lot of ties into what Minneapolis has done. But, you know, how do we think about the way we, the way out of the city? How do you, how do you plan particularly for Biden neighborhoods that have, you know, stability and mixes going forward? And so Scott's been working on that and we have ideas. And so the, you know, I wish I could tell you, you know, our recommendations, I would like to start from one, two, three and four. What do you think of that and give us reactions to it? But the, you know, the timing is such that, that I think it would be, um, it's prudent to wait to see what this task force comes up with and then use that as a foundation to build on. And so, and one of the advantages that is building up that in a regional sense as well, because this is a joint effort. Something that Scott and Josh essentially are, Josh, Joshua.
Yes, start.
But Scott and Josh have been, you know, very much embracing, so you have the city elects one of those planning staff and the state of Eau Claire's planning staff that are actively engaged and spending time and energy and resources and trying, you know, having this task force with a lot of people. But develop, you know, get, get road map forward that should be, uh, really good and so. You asked me last spring where we'd be this hard opinion, I mean, I'm excited about what's going to be coming out of that task force. And particularly since Josh and Scott have been, you know, on the front lines of that. They're, they're going to be very vested in those ideas and recommendations that come out. So we're translating the ideas that we're going to want to bring back to you for prioritization and policy direction.
Thanks, Dale. And that, yeah, ties back to my initial kickoff here is that we're just kind of pulled over to the side, do a little rest stop here, just kind of assess where we're at. So I always think back as well, 15 years driving up here from Kansas City with little kids in the car and always driving back to Kansas City and there's a rest stop 45 minutes from our house, we can never not stop. Always have to stop for you and I always went, if we only live 45 minutes closer, you wouldn't have to stop. You're kind of this, if we were only a month or two ahead of where we were, we, we'd have a lot more kind of here in the period of topping things. So we're just, again, only a month or two from now, we're, we'll have now.
Well, I actually appreciate, sorry, I appreciate you starting this conversation now rather than doing all the work and then being like, here's what we have, what do you think? And so I really appreciate this opportunity to like chat through it.
We apologize if it wasn't this summer.
Right, right, yeah, than earlier.
So, and I, so I'm glad that this is happening this way and that, you know, you don't necessarily have eight things that you intend to do and then us saying like, well, wait, we want to do this instead. And then it's all kind of mucky. And so I think I, I appreciate doing it this way, I think it's a good way, good model for how to do other big things like this. I am bringing some of my own ideas to the table. And again, like in this space of like floating things without any real like solid expectations of anything necessarily. I, I, I'm curious about like a, some sort of package that we could develop that would be rolled out and as a, a nice tidy little package for developers who are developing housing that is within that range of where we have a deficit. And I wonder if there's not, there's a chance for a way to analyze year after year where our deficit is in those brackets and then align that, align that, that benefits package for developers to, that, allow that, that benefit package to be fluid based on what we actually need year to year. Because ideally, if we start to work on this, eventually the places that we have really deep deficits will, will start to be, you know, replenished or whatever. So, um, so that's, and I absolutely love the idea of the structure and being kind of moved into that. I also imagine like revolving fund for affordable housing for developers who are, are looking at like developing in that bracket where we need housing availability. I've also, I've also been interested in, or just kind of, my, my interest has perked at the idea of like assessing some requirements that we have that are not necessarily a high priority for us right now, or maybe aren't going to be in the future. For example, I think, you know, parking requirements could be, I, I think could be something that we at least consider to make housing cheaper, to reduce spam, to encourage higher density, especially in other areas. I don't know if we can create different parking requirements for different types of city.
Can we call it? Right hand.
Yeah. And I think, so our plan dedication is something that Emily had been talking about. I think especially given all this, I guess we'll have to, about what we want to do by now. I wonder if that could also be moved into some, some package as some sort of incentive. Because I think that, you know, creating a big dense block of concrete is also not good for anybody. And so, so how, yeah, considering how we can fold it, like livability and maintain that livability, but we're, I think.
Yeah, I agree, I see what you're saying. I mean, maybe it's, and so I see where you involve us to get the, the conversations and they are, they obviously have heard zoning changes. So kind of compromise, yeah, I'm not sure that I want to, but I also think, it sounds like whatever the end goal is, it's about health saving, which is fine, but which means you know, being, you know, being smart about it and being purposeful and intentional, like I can use, it's not just enough, which is. And that's like my name, a fabulous part of the nation, as a good name, right? Intentional purpose. And they, uh, they shouldn't. Yeah, I mean, that's why I'm a side role player, you know, you don't want that kind of, the last minute chaos, you know, and.
Especially when, you know, you're, you're, you're disturbing.
Right? Yeah, let's go, yeah.
But, so they do quite as well, and that's why we kind of come back to like, you know, park, I mean, that's and not just, you know, that's where we're going to see, we're going to focus on that as well. Not too distant past. They're looking at, they're having their own, you know, portion. There's anything to see with all that, but I think even as well, you can check back at other locations that could be, that could serve as a pilot.
This is, this is not going to be easy. There's going to be some difficult conversations. So I think it's important to reset those goals, those goals, maybe the priority of how how do you want to think through there and understand why we're making certain decisions as well. Back to the, 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 the conversation. We understand that part of what we're trying to stand is we want to have that as well. Moving forward to that, if it comes to a difficult conversation. You have to be able to know why we're going, you know, somewhere in that particular area, which has, has a, has a, has a.
And, yes, you know, basically, I've been trying to address the full, you know, full bell curve here. I want that, you know, satisfied inventory, like Dale's saying, and I mean, you know, we may see more, because we may need to have some hard discussions with existing single family neighborhoods that may end up looking at mixed housing types, or that may be outside the norm of what they're used to. And I know we talked too, in some, some sector, we're just talking about goals, and like, you know, it's talking about you know, have the data needs to speak to that, but a number of communities also have, you know, goals of number of affordable units per se, you know, per year to have those developed. One way or another, their existing inventories, term, and affordable units, which is just construction. Just as an example, but those are things that seem to come out of this report through the task force, but again, it's going to have to be through that, through that data. Just to include, you know, put a goal up there and then, not even close to being, so we don't want to do that either. We set ourselves up.
The other part to that, really, I think, the other comments is we have to be very intentional that the goals and the decided programs that are in place work with the private sector and development.